Welcome, everybody, this evening. We'll begin with our Committee of the Whole for the August 6, 2019 City Council meeting. Council has the minutes from the July 16 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes from the July 16 meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are carried forth. Greenspace Advisory Board, this will carry over from our last meeting. Mayor Pro Tim Whitten.
Yes, sir. I'd like to nominate for the open position being vacated by Tyler Adams, Mr. John Martin.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second for Mr. John Martin. Are there any other nominations from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Leslie Beetles for the position.
Second.
Motion and a second for Ms. Leslie Beetles. Are there any other nominations from the council? Okay, we'll close the nominations. Any discussion for Mr. Martin?
I just would like to reiterate what I stated at the last meeting, that he has served in key leadership roles in multiple civic groups and stated that he is ready to give back and pay his civic rent.
Anything else for Mr. Martin? Okay, any comments for Ms. Beetles?
Yes, sir. I'd like to state that Ms. Beetles is the former Director of the Auburn University Arboretum, and I can't think of any experience that would more eminently qualify someone for Greenspace Advisory position. And I realized, last time around, it was pointed out that she's not a resident of Auburn, she's a resident of Opelika, and that I personally opposed having board members who did not live in the city limits, both during the campaign and during the task force process for boards and commissions. However, the City Council chose as a whole to not eliminate people based on their residency. So, based on that, I think Ms. Beetles is the most qualified applicant for the position.
Okay. Any other comments for Ms. Beetles?
And I'd reiterate that, and I think I mentioned last meeting, Morgan Beetles is an Auburn High School graduate, has a bachelor's degree in horticulture and a master's degree from Auburn, I think is the current Director of the Arboretum. Grew up on Thatch and Armstrong, you know, so while I, I believe she does rent a house in Opelika, and I can't speak a lot to that, but I agree that I think that Morgan is very well qualified for this position.
Okay. Thank you, Ted. Anyone else would like to talk? Okay, so we'll close our discussion. At this point in time, we'll take our vote. Let's do this by hand. So, all in favor for Mr. Martin, please raise your hand. Is that five? Okay. So, that's five votes, or Mr. Martin will be confirmed later on in the agenda. All right. Questions on the agenda for the City Manager? If not, City Manager, is anything we need to know about for the meeting tonight?
No, sir. I don't believe we have any corrections.
Is there a move to adjourn this Committee of the Whole? No move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for Committee of the Whole is adjourned. We will get started with the regular meeting at 7:00. Lindsey?
Johnson.
Here.
Nixon.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Coby.
Here.
Harson.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Here.
Here. Before we rise for the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, I would like to ask each of us to keep in mind the tragedies that happened over the weekend in El Paso and Dayton as we take this moment of silence. So, if you'd please rise, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then follow that with a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, at our first meeting of each month, we're proud always to recognize our Employee of the Month, and we're certainly proud today to recognize Ms. Renee Nettles. Ms. Nettles, would you please come forward? This is a memo to City Manager Jim Buston from Al Davis Community Services Director for the Employee of the Month. It is my honor to nominate Renee Nettles, Recreational Administrative Assistant for the Boykin Community Center, as the Employee of the Month. She transitioned from the Parks and Rec Department to the Community Services Team during the city's reorganization in 2018. Since Renee began working for the city in 1995, she has demonstrated professionalism and has consistently displayed great customer service skills. She's the first to arrive every morning, sometimes even before daylight, to prepare the Boykin Community Center to welcome children, seniors, and the users of the Boykin Fitness Center and the Boykin Gymnasium and all the staff. Renee manages her administrative responsibilities well, and she embodies a warm and helpful spirit to fellow staff and guests. She is motivated in her new roles, including coordinating activities and work projects with other city departments. Renee's greatest talents are working with the Boykin tenants who depend on her scheduled use of non-lease space. She resolves maintenance issues and responds to any questions they receive regarding the Boykin Community Center from parents and citizens. Not only has Renee been dependable, responsible, and kept a positive attitude, she has shown initiative and a very admirable trait. Renee often adjusts schedules to meet the tenants' needs. One example is Renee's work with the Boys and Girls Club to provide additional space for their programming in both buildings at the Boykin Community Center, especially during the summer. Having seen Renee's resounding abilities in resolving tenants' concerns and her commitment to providing quality customer service, I believe that she is worthy of recognition as the Employee of the Month. Congratulations. Five years, Public Safety Department, Fire Division, Nick Zirkowski. Public Safety Department, Police Division, five years, Chelsea Williams. Public Safety Department, Administrative Division, 10 years, Renee Delaney.
I think you brought the cutest person to the table.
I didn't mean you, though. Information Technology, 15 years, Greg Nelson. 20 years, Public Safety Department, Police Division, Jody Hillier. We also have another Employee Achievement Award we'd like to recognize this evening, and this is a memo to City Manager Buston from Megan McGowan-Crouch, Assistant City Manager from Scott Cummins Development Services Executive Director, and Forrest Cotton, Our Planning Director. Please accept this nomination of Principal Planner Tom Weintraub for an Achievement Award. Tom joined the City of Auburn in July 2014. During his employment here, he has done an exemplary job of providing long-range services to the city. Highlights of his work efforts include the 2015 Moratorium Research and Review Initiative Report, which provided valuable information as the city at the time grappled with developing a strategy to better guide and regulate multifamily housing, and more specifically, private dormitory development. Spearheading the first five-year update of the Comp Plan 2030, excuse me, and serving during his entire five-year tenure as the Exclusive Planning Services Staff Liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission. During the past two years, Tom has been enrolled in the Master of Public Administration Program at the University of Illinois Springfield. The program curriculum included coursework in public policy, organizational dynamics, capital budgeting and programming, community planning and policy, human resource management, and statistical applications for public administrators. In addition, Tom's academic excellence earned him a place in the Pi Alpha Alpha Honor Society for Master of Public Administration students. He earned his degree this past May. We're all very proud of Tom for both his professional and academic accomplishments, and I'm proud to nominate him for this award. Tom? We've got a great employee who's retiring tonight. We want to recognize him from the Environmental Services Department after 25 years, Mr. Harry Foster. Advisory Board, and we'll be confirming that a little bit later in our meeting. Under announcements tonight, I just want to remind everybody that school starts on Thursday, and I personally look forward to welcoming the children of Cary Woods to school and opening the doors, but it's an exciting time for all of us in the community, and I remind you that it'll be different traffic patterns, and people will be getting used to going places that they haven't been going to, and I ask all of us, as we wake up Thursday morning, to please take a little more time and to be a little more patient as we get ready to go to work and to go to school. But we're excited every year that school starts, and we're excited about the opportunities for our children. The MIND organization that's been facilitated and supported by East Alabama Medical Center is having a fundraiser next Tuesday night at the Jewel Collins Smith Museum, and this fundraiser will support the people out in Borogard and Smith Station who suffered during the tornadoes of last March. I encourage all of you who are interested and want to participate in that. There's also a silent auction involved. To please come that night, there'll be good food and good fun and good fellowship, and it's to a very, very worthy cause. The tickets, I believe you can find at the Chamber of Commerce, are going online, and I think they are $50. There's also a historic marker dedication on August 17 that will officially mark our North Auburn Historic District. Councilman Griswold, I didn't know if you'd like to make a comment about that. Steal your thunder.
Nope. Knock yourself out.
If you'd like to elaborate, you go ahead.
We're ready to get it done, ready to get that monument placed.
Good, okay. Well, and everybody's invited to that, obviously, and there'll be more about that later. Our little 12-year-old All-Star team is undefeated in the Dixie Youth World Series, and they played at night at 8:00, and certainly cheers to them, and I believe all those boys are members of our school system, and Josh Jackson is the coach of that team, and they've been representing us well in Ruston, Louisiana, this week. Cheers on the corner went great a couple of weeks ago, even though the weather was kind of dicey that night, and I thank the downtown merchants and all their support staff for putting that event on and giving us something fun and wonderful to do during the summer. I wanted to give you an update on the task force. Last night, the Diversity Inclusion Task Force had a meeting, and we're trying to put some permanency to our efforts and talk about what the future looks like, and I believe we'll be coming with some ideas forward here in the near future, but it was a very productive meeting with a lot of great ideas, and we'll look forward to sharing those with you as we get a little further down the line. The Short-Term Rentals Task Force rentals will be meeting next Wednesday at 5:00. And once again, we're to the point now where we're trying to make some decisions that we can offer, some decision points and information that we'll be turning over to the Planning Commission, and at that time, they'll begin to build an ordinance. Remember, when they build that ordinance and vote on that ordinance, at that Planning Commission meeting, there'll be a public hearing, and you'll have had time, everybody in our community will have had time to digest what that ordinance says. And then depending on what happens with that ordinance, it'll come to the City Council. And again, you'll have an opportunity, that there'll be a public hearing the night that we determine this. This is an emotional issue. People are ready for us to make a decision. I would have liked for us to be a little further along than we are, and some of that has to do with things that have happened in my life recently, that I haven't been able to push this far ahead. But we're to the point now where we're going to take the information that we've heard in our public meetings, and that you've said to us online when the commentary on the ordinances, and we're going to try to make some determinations that we then can hand over to the planning staff and the Planning Commission. It's in the best interest of this community that we figure this out as quickly as possible, and that's what we intend to do. For the last 24 hours on Sunday afternoon through Monday morning, I was fortunate to be able to go to Birmingham and be a part of the Big Five Plus Five. The Big Five has existed for the last four or five years, and this year, they decided to add the next five. And what that means is the mayors of the 10 largest cities in the state of Alabama. It was a very valuable and rich opportunity to discuss common issues and common problems and to share ideas and to hear best practices and do's and don'ts of people that have been doing this a heck of a lot longer than I have. And I'll assure you that with eight months on the job, I was by far the Rookie of the Year. But there's a lot of people there that have been doing a great job, they care passionately about their communities, and I look forward to continuing to be a part of this organization as they plan to meet quarterly. So, it was a very interesting time, and I believe that I'll be able to glean some things from those experiences of those people and those leaders that could help make Auburn better. One of the things we talked about was the census and how important the census is, and I intend to meet with the staff in the near future and talk about a plan of how we can promote the census. The reality is that the census means $1,600 a person. So, if we don't account for all of our people in our community, we're still going to have to provide for the services that they're going to need, and if we miss them, we're missing $1,600. And so, it's very important that the city does as good a job as possible of trying to account for all of our people in our community. And so, we've got to get people excited about taking 10 minutes of their time to go online and fill that census out when the time comes in early 2020. One of the other things I talked to particularly Mayor Maddox about is student housing. He's the mayor of Tuscaloosa, and they've had troubles with student housing, and they've had to make some hard decisions. I would tell you as the mayor sitting here tonight that I'm concerned, and we've had a task force that's been looking at student housing over the last year. At this point in time, we've asked the staff to help us create an inventory of all the student housing opportunities there are in our city. But I think as school starts back now, we will begin to hear from those owners and those landlords about what the realities are of our inventory of student housing. I also believe, and we're starting to hear this some in our community, that the new administration and the Board of Trustees have made their decision on what the future of Auburn's enrollment is, and what it is today is what it's going to be. And so, we've got to figure this out. I remain steadfast in believing that this could be one of our greatest trouble points for the future of our community, and it's something that I want to do the best job I can to lead this council and us trying to figure out a plan that works for all of Auburn. Okay? All right, anybody else on the council?
I do, I have an announcement. Before I make my announcements, I just wanted to say about the student housing. I think you said something before about getting up some documentation. Do they have a deadline as to when they need to provide the information, or they're just going to?
Connie, the staff's working on it, and I believe that we'll have it sooner than later.
One of the announcements I want to make, first of all, I have stepped down from the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force and has created a task force called the Northwest Auburn Task Force. And this task force is, well, our motto is, we would never move forward if we keep looking back. And the task force is designed for anyone who wants to join this task force. It's not a color, it doesn't matter how many people, but we just need some help to get this task force together. And we have a meeting this Tuesday, which is going to be our third meeting, August 13 at 6:00 at the Boykin Community Center. And I would like to invite anyone who wants to come out. I am doing a PowerPoint presentation to give some input on the task force, some of the rules, some of the things that we're going to be working on, and it's going to be city statewide, it doesn't matter. So, I'm asking, it's free membership, so I'm just asking everybody to, free, I'm just asking anybody that wants to come out, it's not limited. It's...
I just asked, could we have been charging?
Oh, oh, oh.
I mean, boards and commission was a hot ticket.
Oh, okay. So, anybody who wants to join the task force, we would appreciate it. Right now, we're about 50 members strong and about 17, 60 members strong, and about 17 businesses strong. So, and we're trying to just build a community and just want everybody to help play a part in it.
Anyone else on the council? Have an announcement made? No? Okay, go ahead.
I just have a couple. One is, and I'm going to give credit to Brett because he reminded me, but we have some guests here from the Gooch Performing Arts Center, which is opening their doors very, very soon, like less than two weeks, and just super excited about their lineup and what they mean to Auburn and our partnership with them, and we appreciate, and I've been tracking your hard work, and thank you, Chris, and your team for all that you do, and can't wait to see the impact on Auburn's economics and our sales tax from that. And then, on a somber, right, dollars? And then, on a somber note, several of us went to a vigil last night that the Moms Demand Action put together, and I just want to acknowledge their efforts and appreciate them in bringing together the community to acknowledge lives lost and an opportunity to heal for our community. And as the mayor stated, school starts on Thursday, and fortunately, we had a young man, a rising senior, who lost his life in a single car crash this past week, and just as our young people go out into the world and out on the roads, just hug them, love them, and tell them to not drive distracted and not to, and just to, yeah, not text and drive, but also just to, eyes on the road, but unfortunate that we lost a young man who had great potential in our community.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else on the council have an announcement?
Let me, Ron, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say this, too. I want to piggyback off of what you said about the census. I actually met with Yolanda Fears, and she's going to, she has given me some information about the census, and as the mayor stated, the census is very, very important, and part of our task force is we're going to be helping people who do not understand the census, help you fill out the papers, and any help that you need in providing you with the census. So, that census is very, very important, especially in all areas. So, I just want to throw that out there, and thank you for bringing that in.
No, thank you, it's very important. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing. The City Council recently received in email a note from Mary Norman, the President of the Auburn Heritage Association. She asked that a letter be read, and we had a flurry of emails of late, and I wanted to make sure that this one didn't slip through the cracks, so if you'll indulge me, I'll read this letter. Dear Mayor and City Council Members, on behalf of the Auburn Heritage Association, I'm writing to let you know of our support for the City Council to work out a solution for the proposed demolition of the Coles House at the corner of Sanford and South College Street. As you are aware, the Coles family and the Coles Construction Company was responsible for many of the important buildings in the East Alabama area in the early part of the last century. I know you have heard from many citizens about this issue. It is sad we are losing one of the focal points of our city. The Coles House is the introduction to Auburn University students, just as the depot used to be, just as the city was able to preserve that important historical structure. It is the hope of the Auburn Heritage Association, the city can preserve the Coles House. With all the new building in the city, many citizens feel we are losing our identity as the loveliest village. It is our hope the city will do everything possible to either leave the house as it sits, or if needed, at least save the house from demolition, and move it to a location that can be enjoyed by future generations. There are very few 1893 structures left in the city of Auburn since the Auburn Heritage Association was responsible for moving the Nun Winston House back in 1996. If there is any assistance we can give to the city regarding this issue, please let me know. Sincerely, Mary P. Norman, President.
Thank you, Bob, and we'll be here. Jim, would you like to comment on what the progress is of the due diligence that the staff has done with the Coles House? I know y'all have been working on it since our last meeting.
We are working on compiling a report. I had hoped to have that for you this evening, but it looks like we still have some information to get from some of the... to get from some of the private citizens who have been looking at possibilities. And before we give you the report, we want to make sure that we can tell you what their intentions are, for sure. And we have heard from Auburn University as well, and so we want to make sure that when we present you that report, everything is accurate. So I expect that we will have something for you later this week, maybe for your Friday packet.
Yeah. All right. Is it a possibility that we might want to create some time either at the Friday meeting or at the next committee of the whole to have a discussion around this?
It might be a good idea if the council wishes to set committee of the whole next time to discuss the report that we give you and then any options that the council would like to consider.
That being said, is the council okay doing that, coming early for committee of the whole in two weeks, on the 20th? Okay. Generally feel we'll make that plan then. Thank you. Okay. Any other council members with any announcements tonight?
Just a real quick one is to thank city manager Buston, Water Resource Management, Eric and Matt for coming, setting up a quick tour over at Chilwakla today. We had a good meeting at Water Resource Management and got for counsel and had an opportunity to walk through the area of the park, and I'm just very appreciative of that and all the information that we've been given. It's been very thorough.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. At this point in time, Auburn University Communications. I know Auburn University is kind of in a transitional period. Okay. How are you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Fine.
I'm Mary Kate Hillis. I'm the Assistant Director of City Relations this year. Auburn University has begun move-in with sorority move-in on August 9th, and the official move-in day will be on August 15th. Students living in off-campus housing will be returning throughout the coming weeks as well. The first day of classes will be on August 19th. We wanted to thank the city for their patience and help during this process. We will be having convocation for the freshman students on Sunday, August 18th, to welcome this year's class. We are also excited to host our annual Meet the Mayor event called Milkshakes with the Mayor. This event will be held on August 16th from 11:00 to 1:00 on the campus green in front of the stadium. This is a way for Auburn students to get involved with the city before the start of the school year. We are looking forward to starting up another great semester and continue to promote Auburn University and work with the city of Auburn.
Seeing some of these council members up here, I'm sure y'all like milkshakes, so I'm guessing the council could have joined us as well, maybe for that day?
Anyone from the community is welcome.
Okay. Good. All right.
And when is that?
It's August 16th from 11:00.
Great. All right. Thank you. Thank you for your report. We look forward to that.
Fair enough.
I'll be doing my duty with my daughter on Friday afternoon, or Friday morning from 10:00 to 11:00, so trying to get her unloaded and moved in. All right. At this point in time, it's Citizens Communications on the agenda. This is only for items that are on the agenda. I know that we have some people here tonight that would like to speak to us on an item that's not on the agenda, and that time will come later on at the end. But this is just a time for you to speak to items that are on our agenda. If you would please come forward and give your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes. CNN 01, city manager Buston.
Under city manager's communication this evening, we have the announcement of one vacancy on the West Pace Village Improvement District Board of Directors. The term begins September 16th, 2019, and ends September 15th, 2025. The appointment will take place at the September 4th, 2019 city council meeting. The incumbent has served one term and is eligible for reappointment. Our next order of business this evening is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item separately?
Yes, Mr. Buston. If you would remove item 8E, that's 8 Echo, and 8F, five, 8 Foxtrot 5. That's just for public information, please.
Let me make sure I get that.
The parking deck and the East Alabama Healthcare.
So that was 8E and...
F, F5.
F5. Okay.
Thank you. When else from the council would like to remove something from the consent agenda? Okay. If not, Jim, should we go ahead and take the removed items first?
We could do that. So item 8E is the authorization for a reimbursement of expenditures for future borrowings for the Wright Street parking deck. This is a renewal of a previous resolution that the council had provided, an 18-month resolution, to pay for any expenses that we incur before we do the borrowing in developing the design and surveying and everything for the parking deck. Once we do the bond selling, then we can refund ourselves from that bond sale for the expenses that we incurred before we sold the bonds. And we did not have a lot of expenses. We had hoped that we had been under construction already with the, with the deck. We weren't. So this will extend that opportunity for us to continue getting the deck built and then reimbursing ourselves for any expenses.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second. We have a motion. Second, any questions on this? The, yes. The total cost is noted to be not to exceed 12 million. Is that same cost that was on the expired resolution? Or has the cost changed since we, the other council originally considered this?
Yeah. I think the, I would have to go back and look at what, the cost from the original plan and the cost now had not changed. However, we did anticipate an increased cost for the bigger deck. So the, and there is something to remember in this plan. We are also working with the Baptist Student Organization. They have already paid us $1 million to help rebuild their part of the deck. So when we say 12 million, that's 12 million of our money plus $1 million of the Baptist money, or 1.1 million. So really, it may be that we'll see that the debt costs $13 million, but that's including that $1 million. So it's important to understand the relationship there with the Baptists and how much money they are putting into the project as well. But I would have to ask Penny for what we had on the original resolution.
The original resolution was set for 10 million. There's been some change, obviously, at Auburn.
All right. Any other... Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All of them in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Item 10, or 8F5 is the resolution to reimburse Auburn University, Auburn Research and Technology, or to join in a cooperative effort with Auburn University, Auburn Research and Technology Foundation, and the East Alabama Healthcare Authority in the creation of a critical care infrastructure. And this would be a reimbursement for basically the emergency room, MRI center, outpatient facility that East Alabama Medical Center is going to be building in the Auburn Technology Park. And our portion of this, university asked us to, for $2 million. We asked them if they would accept $200,000 a year for 10 years as our contribution to this, which they were amenable to. And we worked out, the way we came up with that $200,000 a year is we worked out the potential income from occupational license fees, the $50,000 per year in lieu of taxes that East Alabama Medical Center would have to pay us. And that equates to just over, revenue of a little over $200,000 a year. So in order to bring such a, an important facility, medical facility, to the citizens of Auburn, we recommended that this expenditure of $200,000 a year be approved by the council.
Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion. Second, any questions for city manager Buston on this item?
I don't have a question, but I just, the reason I brought this up is I think it's a wonderful project, and I just wanted to make sure that the city, that their residents were aware of the tremendous facility that's going to be constructed will benefit all of the citizens of Auburn. And I'll just read here real quickly. A freestanding emergency department, ambulatory surgery center, orthopedics, endoscopy, ENT services, ophthalmology, radiology, and a pharmacy. So all of those things will be in Auburn now, where you don't require you to go to Opelika for those types of services if that's what you choose to do. Again, I think it's a tremendous investment in the community, and I'm all for it.
Thank you, Kelly. Totally agree. It's going to be a great, great amenity for all of our citizens. Okay. We have a motion and a second. No more questions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Under ordinances this evening, we have item 9A is Eugenia Talmage and Sharon Stitch Talmage requesting annexation of 14.55 acres of property located at 2042 Bonnie Glen Road. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this item.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? If not, are there any questions? CNN 9 Lindsey.
Rossen?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes, ma'am.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Oh, yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9B is establishing no parking zones on Fraser Street, Grant Avenue, Talbert Drive, Williams Avenue, Canton Avenue, and White Street.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Not, are there any questions or comments?
Well, I do want to ask a question. The no parking zones on Fraser, on item B, do you know when this is going to take place?
When we would do the no parking, if you passed it tonight? Let me ask Allison.
After it passes tonight, we plan to order the signs, and we should have them up. Crap. So after you pass it, if you pass it tonight, we will order the signs, and we intend to have them up before school starts.
Okay. Thanks. And when does school start?
Auburn University.
Right. She was, she was meaning Auburn University School, not...
Okay. Yeah, I know. In 19th.
That's bad.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to compliment Allison Fraser and her staff. We, Councilman Taylor and I had several meetings with the community to kind of gauge their desires and what they wanted, and y'all followed through with it, and I thank you very much.
I concur.
And congrats to you, Mr. Griswold and Ms. Taylor, for working with your constituents over there. Okay. So we've got a motion and a second. Any other comments? All right. Lindsey?
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Levy?
Ma'am.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes, ma'am.
Andrews?
Yes.
Item 9C is the adoption of the mid-biennial budget adjustment.
Do you sort of ask for unanimous consent?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening?
I just have something I'd like to bring up first. I'd like to discuss an amendment to the, to the biennium budget. In the budget, the city manager wants to increase the cost...
Just one second, Stephen.
So sorry.
No, there is no problem. We're going to let you finish. Mr. Buston, how do we need to handle this procedurally with an amendment in the ordinance? Just want to make sure we do this the right way.
Right. Should you decide that you wanted to amend the budget as presented to you, you would have to say what that is. You would have to have a vote. The majority would have to vote to include that amendment. Then you would have to then reintroduce the ordinance, ask for unanimous consent as amended, and move forward like that.
Okay. All right. So that's, so we do the amendment first then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Wait, let me ask. Procedurally, don't we deny unanimous consent and then have debate on it the next meeting since we're, this is only for a waiver of first reading? So procedurally, should we not?
You could deny unanimous consent, but the procedure would be the same whether you did it this time or next time.
But enough we had to, on debate, if we had to wait for a second reading.
I don't think you, no. You don't have to wait for a second reading to do the debate.
Do an amendment.
Do an amendment. You could debate it and amend it now as long as no one objected to moving forward with... The mayor asked if anyone had a problem moving forward. No one objected, so now we're in the second reading.
Okay. All right. So we'll move forward with looking at the amendment first. All right. Go ahead, Stephen.
So in the budget, the city manager wants to increase the cost of health benefits by 7% to the employees. I tend to have a different approach or philosophy when it comes to employee benefits, especially health insurance benefits. Auburn is in a very good financial place. 2018 fiscal year revenues were 2.2% higher than projected expenses. Expenses were 10.3% lower than project, than budgeted, resulting in a fiscal year 2018 ending fund balance of 11.99 million higher than expected. When having these kinds of results, that speaks to the hard work of the employees. Based off of our budget meeting two weeks ago, the city manager was proud that the city doesn't feel problems with just more employees, but the employees find a way to solve solutions. I think that is admirable, and I think it speaks to one of the many reasons why the city of Auburn is in a good financial place. It reduces payroll and benefit costs, which allows for other things to happen. However, that kind of mindset, that kind of mindset often leads to departments being understaffed, which causes increased stress to the employees, lower morale, and satisfaction with their jobs. Existing employees are responsible for an increased workload that may ultimately take a toll on their mental and physical health. If we as an organization want to keep a good, loyal, and hardworking, and hardworking employees that are absolute best at what they do, which I believe is what we have here in the city of Auburn, I think, I think we would be adding additional financial burdens to the employees by adding an additional 7% increase on their cost of health benefits. A starting, a starting environmental service collector makes $16.15 an hour. Before taxes are taken out, this person is taking home roughly $26,640 or $2,220 per month. If this employee has a family, $314 comes out of their monthly paycheck. That is 14.14% of their entire paycheck. Increasing this employee's cost for health benefits by 7% increases the number to 15.13% for their overall paycheck. To me, that is a huge portion of a person's salary compared to our highest-paid employee, the city manager, who pays the exact same rate for health insurance as the lowest-paid employee. If the city manager had a family, he would only be paying 1.75% of his entire paycheck to health insurance, and if he is single, he pays .24% to health insurance. In my opinion, that is fundamentally wrong, but I realize it will take time to make change if the rest of the council wants to pursue a change. So my proposed amendment to the biennium budget is this. We do not increase the health insurance benefit cost to employees in this biennium budget. Next summer in the new two-year budget, we need to take a good, hard look at health benefits and have thoughtful conversation around this topic.
All right. So at this point in time, I think it's the right thing to do is allow you or the staff to respond. Mr. Buston?
So I think it's very dangerous to look at a, a very well-run and very well-managed budget and project that as if we have money to burn or money to spare, because we don't. Staff does a very good job at making sure that we are very cognizant of the taxpayer dollar, and we don't, we don't use those taxpayer dollars frivolously. We have many, many more projects that we would like to do that we just don't have the money to do. So to characterize the budget, or to characterize it as if we have money that we can just spend, without taking that into consideration, I think is a mischaracterization. Just to give you some numbers, our claims, our insurance claims for March, were $364,100 from our insurance fund. We were only able to replenish that. The only amount of money that went back in from both the city's portion and the staff's portion is $311,500. In August, our expenses for insurance claims were $376,100. Again, we only put in right around $311, $313,000. In May, we had $805,000-plus dollars worth of medical expenses, and again, only $300,000 put into the fund. In June, we had $481,500 worth of claims. Again, only $300,000, $310,000 put into the fund. In the budget, we are having to shore up the ending fund balance of our insurance by $500,000. Now, it may seem like we are doing a favor to the employee by not making them shoulder some of the burden of health care. At some point, they will have to do it. It's much more palatable to be able, for a family, to, in small increments, be able to share that burden instead of at some point having to either cut the type of health care we give them because we can't afford it or make them pay a big lump sum into the program. Now, what you failed to mention is that also I have recommended a 3% COLA. And a 3% COLA, I gave you the chart during our presentation. So, a 3% COLA may add 50 cents an hour to the salary of an employee. Whereas a 7, and a 7% increase in health insurance only takes away 3 to 21 cents. So, the net increase, I think for the lowest-paid employee, the net increase was like 37 cents an hour in aggregate. Again, from the fiduciary standpoint of making sure that we do very carefully spend the taxpayers' money and that we only spend that money if absolutely needed and that there is a burden that the employees need, I think they expect to pay and need to pay. And our employees get a very good bang for the buck. Single-family coverage, or single-coverage, I think for us is $42 to $45 a month. I think at the university, it's triple that. And I think you would see in other organizations, for the type of health care we have, it's a very good bargain. And I don't think that asking the employees to step up and help the taxpayer, because the taxpayers are subsidizing even the health care as we have it now.
All right. Any questions from the council?
Jim, when was the last time we raised health insurance premiums for employees?
I think it was, might have been two years ago, Kristen? It was two years ago.
What was that percentage, do we know?
I believe it was also 7%.
The idea, I think, that we've had is to try to raise it in small increments until we can try to come to a level that we aren't subsidizing out of the general fund, the increased care. There is the amount that we expect to pay, $480-some dollars per month per employee is what the city puts in. And as I mentioned to you during our budget session, we do have a fund balance that we try to keep. And that's where we take out the money that's in excess of what is going into the fund. And as you can see, just in the last six months, we are not breaking even yet.
Not even with the $500,000 adjustment?
The $500,000 adjustment allows us to continue to not, right, to not have it break even, to not be... Now, as we said, there are other things that we do to try to reduce the costs. We have the clinic, which is free, and so we try to get our employees to use health care. They can get their certain medications free at the health clinic where they don't have to pay, even for, you know, a co-pay or anything like that to see a health care professional. We have a system whereby we have a health coach. And that health coach, if you want to avail yourself of the health coach, you get basically a $40 reduction in your, well, you don't get a reduction. If you don't see the health coach, we charge you an additional $40 a month because we feel that we need to help, all of us together need to help reduce our health care costs. And health care, as you know, as you can, not, it's not for us, it's for the entire nation, is going up astronomically.
So are you saying, I just wanna make sure I understand what you're saying. So you, if we, if you increase the health care, the COLA is a raise for each employee?
COLA is a raise for employees. The increase in health care is a deduction.
A deduction? And it's pretty much gonna balance out, or?
It, with the COLA, every employee with the COLA would get a substantial raise.
Increase.
Even though the seven, it sounds bad. A 3% COLA with a 7% increase in health care sounds like we're taking money away. But in fact, the COLA is on the gross salary, the 7% is on just the amount of money that is paid into the health care fund by the employees. So, basically, you're giving someone a 50 cents an hour raise, taking back 3 cents an hour. And it depends on whether you have single-family, single-coverage, family-coverage, single-plus-one coverage. We have different coverage levels.
So everybody gets the raise?
But everybody would get a raise.
Increase. Let's use the right words, increase, because we're not...
Everybody will see an increase in their salary. The minimum increase with, looking at how we are set up with the actual funds that we give out, the person receiving the lowest salary in the city, if that person had the highest coverage, that means entire-family coverage, that person would still receive an increase in salary of $600 a year.
Garden, go on your COLAs. Now, we, I think we mentioned in the budget meeting, I know there were a few years during the recession that we were not awarded COLAs. With this 3%, if we approve it with the biennium, are we gonna be caught up at this point? I think we discussed that.
So, we did do a, for many years, we did not do a COLA. We fell behind in our competitiveness and the salary that the employees were making working for the city and the salaries that employees were making outside the city was very different. We were making much less than the private sector or even other public-sector entities. And that was mainly due to not giving a COLA for a number of years. So, having realized that, we did a study to see where we were in the marketplace. And the council then adjusted salaries to bring us to the level that we thought we would be competitive. We have been giving COLAs since then, and I think that we need to continue to do that to keep us competitive. If we did not do that, I think we'd go back to the level where we'd become uncompetitive and then we'd be, just like in the health care, it would be a big infusion of money at one time to try to bring us back up.
Jim, do we have...
And let me make sure that I've said all that correctly.
You did so good. That's exactly right.
Do we have any other mechanism in place for employee salary raises such as performance evaluation?
We do. Every year, we do a performance evaluation and depending on where you are in the pay scale, it is for the first 10 steps?
Correct.
For the first 10 steps, then you get a yearly raise if you pass your evaluation. So, and that equates to about a 3% raise. And then after that, it's every two years where you are, you still are evaluated every year, but you don't get the opportunity for merit increase except for every two years, and then...
And then at the final year, it's three.
Y'all having a job openness?
Any other questions from the council? Any other comments? Yes.
Mr. Buston, our inability to break even this past FY is largely due to a tremendously unfortunate series of circumstances with police officers and whatnot causing...
What we experienced in May, definitely. That $800,000 in May, definitely. But as you can see, you know, we're, in June, $481,000 in claims. April was $376,000 in claims. March was $364,000 in claims. So, but May was a huge month for us.
I just got one other question. So, Stephen, what are you, I mean, are you proposing that we amend this due to, they shouldn't get this 7%? Or did you understand about the COLA?
Oh, yeah, I understand. Well, I just, I have a different philosophy with this. I personally would not even, I wouldn't put the cost-of-living adjustment in with this if it were me. I would focus primarily just on the health insurance cost. And it's, it is a benefit. I view this as a benefit to the employees for the city, and I think we should, we could do better. The thing that, I guess, upsets me the most about it is the unfairness with the percentage, I guess, with the highest-paying employee paying the exact same as the lowest employee. I think that, I don't think that is good. That is where I'm at mostly with this.
I'm just, you know, I'm not criticizing anything. I just, we're just trying to understand.
Sure. Since we're talking budgets, do we have any idea what Mr. Dixon's proposal would cost right now?
Well, we would continue to run these huge deficits month by month. I can't tell you right now without, it would be, we expect to run a deficit even with the 7% increase. And we're not only increasing the contribution of the employee in the budget as an increase from the city per employee. So I think it goes from 430-some thousand?
We currently do 450 and we're going to 482 per month per employee, so...
And that's, so that's 450, 42 times 750-some employees.
I think it would be, if we're gonna move on forward on this motion, I think it would be wise of us to do some due diligence and have it scored out before we vote on, so that we can know. I'm just saying, I think it'd be important for us to score this out to see what the cost would be to the city before we make a decision on this type of amendment.
I would agree. I think we should have more discussion around it before, before we vote on that. But I did wanna, I wanted to bring it up and have that discussion.
Come so far with our insurance for our employees, back in the ages when I was a young man getting started, just married, not knowing how my wife, didn't make a whole lot back then. And I can remember going to a doctor for, I had to have rabies vaccination or whatever you wanna call it, come in contact, rabid animal. And he took my insurance, the doctor, now, not his staff. It was so bad, doc took my little car and he said, "Well, I guess we'll see what this little insurance company in Montgomery can do for you, boy." So, we've come a long way since then. And I think it's important that we put a little trust in our city manager, his staff, Penny and resources to, I can assure you, having worked with all of them, they would not be asking for it if we didn't need it as a city. Because you never know, we're good this year, but you never know what next year's gonna bring. And I feel, as long as we give the employees that 3% COLA, they're gonna be happy. I was tickled to death to get it. Some of them get an extra bump because you get your step increase, some of them will, yearly and somewhere over two years. They get step increase, they get a 6% raise within a year. So I just feel like it's, that's why we hire, have him and his staff to guide us and he knows the ins and outs of the finances. And we've come a long, long ways. I don't wanna see us get in a situation where we have a deficit and have to go back, maybe take back some benefits we're given. I want them to have good insurance and good insurance is something you gotta pay for. And that's kinda how I see it.
Anything else from the council?
Stephen, I appreciate your compassion, your interest in doing the best we can for our employees. A city's a unique entity that it has responsibility to its employees, but it has also responsibility to the taxpayers. I agree with Tommy. I believe at this point in time, we've gotta trust the professionals who have combed through our budget and have poured through these numbers. And this is the determination they feel like is the best way for our city to move forward. This is always a discussion we can have annually, and as we move forward to next summer when we do a, build a biannual budget, I'm sure it'll come up again and we can have that discussion at this point in time. But I trust Jim and his staff for what they've offered us. So as far as moving forward with this amendment, Mr. Buston, do we need to do this with a hand vote or do we need to do it with a voice vote?
Well, you would need a motion and a second and then a vote.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the table. Would Mr. Dixon be the first? Would he be the motion for that? Would we consider that?
Who could move to adopt the amendment, then someone would have to second it.
All right, all right. Do we have a second?
Can Mr. Dixon restate his motion?
My motion would be that we do not increase the health insurance benefit cost to the employees in this biennium budget.
So we have a motion. Is there a second? Oh, second. Is it a hand vote then, Mr. Buston? All right. So all in favor of this motion, please raise, this amendment, all in favor of this amendment, please raise your hand. All opposed? All right. The amendment fails. So we do have a motion and a second on...
Mayor, if I may, I would like to say...
Yes, go ahead.
I appreciate Stephen thinking of the employees and bringing it forward. I really do, and it means a lot, it means a lot to the employees that you would do that. So I do appreciate your thought on this, Stephen.
No question. Thanks, Tommy. All right, so I'm gonna make sure we backtrack. So we do have a motion and a second on the budget. Am I correct?
And it'll be a roll-call vote.
And be a roll-call vote. Are there any other further questions on the budget?
Yes, I would like to introduce an amendment as well.
Okay.
All right. The budget resolution, the actual budget resolution that will be signed, includes a paragraph, number 16, that states that the city council ratifies, confirms, and authorizes the mayor to sign an amended contract between the city council and the city manager, James Carl Buston III, and confirms all previous changes and modifications to the original contract dated October 9, 2017. I would like to move that the initial phrase in that paragraph be deleted because I believe that by having the mayor do this unilaterally, that it strips the council of our fiscal responsibility. Obviously, we need to confirm all previous changes, and I have no issue with that. The changes have already been made and signed. But as far as the mayor being the sole one to sign a contract, the contract is between the council and the city manager. It's not between the mayor and the city manager. So I believe that the city council as a whole has a responsibility and a role to play.
All right. Mr. Buston, commentary from the staff?
Saying, I mean, that's wording that's been in the budget for, I don't know, maybe 10 years. I would have to go back and check, but it is council's prerogative to change it if they wish to do so.
So what exact wording are you seeking?
I'm seeking that everything prior to, let's see, that paragraph 16 should read that the city council confirms all previous changes and modifications to the original contract dated October 9, 2017. So that the effect of that is that the council approves the contract that is in place. It eliminates the opportunity or additional changes solely at the discretion of the mayor.
All of which would have to be done at this dais?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other comments from the council on this?
Is this... Is this, is this because you don't trust the actions of our mayor? Or are you just seeking for the council to have this authority?
I believe that this council currently has the authority to approve contract expenditures over a certain limit. And the latest contract exceeded that limit without the council having an opportunity to debate it and vote on it. So I believe the, it's not a matter of trust on the mayor, it's a matter of upholding the fiscal responsibilities that's entrusted to this council.
But you were notified of what those intentions and changes were?
Notified and objected, absolutely.
Okay.
But again, there was no opportunity for the council as a whole to consider and discuss a contract between the council and the city manager. So one party of a contract was not able to deliberate on the conditions of the contract.
But at any time, this council has the opportunity to bring forth any objections or otherwise information and seek information on this dais regarding, especially with the one person that we have purview over. So your objections could have been brought forth before this council and the public at any point in time?
My objections were brought forward and at the time, there was confusion even as to the amount of the dollar figure that we were talking about. And so again, I'd like to avoid any confusion in the future. And again, I want to emphasize that this is to reinforce the responsibility, our fiscal responsibility as a council as a whole. That is my issue.
Any other comments from the council?
I'm trying to wrap my mind around what, Colonel, give me one more time what you want, how you want to change it.
I would like to make a motion, or I will in a few minutes, that paragraph 16, which is on page six of six of the draft ordinance, be reworded to say that the city council confirms all previous changes and modifications to the original contract dated October 9th, 2017. So delete the phrase that starts with ratifies, confirms and authorizes.
Well, how would that change? Would the mayor be able to sign?
He'd be able to sign, but not without the authority of the council.
Don't we already have some authority in that? If we just bring it-
Absolutely not.
We bring it up in the committee of the whole and ask to discuss it next week, we can discuss lowering his salary and we all voted to do it. I would assume we could do it.
Absolutely. That's our purview.
Now, I'm not talking about reducing anyone's salary.
I know you're not. I'm just, you know, for example.
I'm talking about our responsible between now and our next city manager, whoever that happens to be. I think it's totally inappropriate to list any person by name in a contract, first off, rather than a position. But again, this is simply to reiterate one more time, as worded, I believe it denies the council the ability to exercise its fiscal responsibility.
So in other words, it's just really authorizing just the mayor to give the city manager an increase?
That's how it's worded now.
Yeah, that's how it's worded now. So you're just asking that the city council has that authority instead of just the mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but the history behind this is that it was, the attempt was to give the city the best chance to retain a city manager at a time where people were seeking that city manager, recruiting that city manager. And there was a negotiation and a back and forth where another community was, was trying to hire the city manager and it just gave, it gave Auburn, it was at that point in time, and I don't know when this was, but it's in our history, it gave Auburn the best chance to have the clearest communication in trying to do all that we could to retain that city manager. And so that's why the mayor was given that authority.
Right, the city council, you're correct. The city councils, previous city councils have pretty much relied on the mayor to be able to react quickly should he and then assuming or she and, and it did start with she, I'm, I think, be able to react quickly if they wanted to keep the city manager and he or she were, in this case, he would have gone somewhere else without the mayor being able to say, well, here is a different compensation package. Now, I don't think it was ever intended that the council would be kept in the dark about it. I think it was understood that the council would be informed of it, but they trusted the mayor to make that decision.
Even though he makes that decision and hires someone or gives someone a raise or whatever, we can come in here at the next council meeting and vote to undo it.
You could.
Make him start over.
Yes. And at any, and you can even fire the city manager at any council meeting, as long as you've got five votes.
Really?
Yes.
You're always trying to harass me and United States Director?
You know, are you finished? Well, I think, I'm along with Griswold as far as naming, putting a person's name there. Because it's almost like, like the mayor committed to James Carl Bustin. So that needs to change.
Well, he did. That is the current city manager.
Yeah, but it still should have been the city, just the city manager.
No, because the contract with the next city manager will be different.
Which would kick in what you're trying to do with your amendment, because this only applies to the current city manager.
Correct.
By the language in paragraph 16.
Right.
Which would resolve the issue that you've brought forward.
Just stated, right. If you eliminated a name, then-
Then you're creating a secondary problem. You're creating the exact problem to which you're trying to move away from.
Correct. So the next person that becomes city manager, this count, or the council that is seated at that time, will be the one who determines what that contract looks like and what the terms are of that contract. That is separate from this item number 16. Fully separate.
Okay, well, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought he said this has been in place for 10 years. So have you been in place for 10 years or?
Well, there have been different names, but-
Oh, so there have been different names on this particular line item?
Right.
Jim, I just think for the audience, I mean, your contract is to be here through December of 2020. You are not asking for a raise anytime between now and December of 2020.
Right. Now-
Will he get a raise with this, this other, you don't get a raise when the insurance?
No. No, I'm not, I'm not seeking any additional compensation, but Mayor, the current contract does not, and I, this needs to be clarified. The current contract does not have an ending date. I have stated that my ending date is December 31st, 2020.
I get you. Thank you for clarifying that.
But yeah, there, and I have also stated that I am not seeking any additional compensation, that what was provided me a year ago was, in my anticipation, for the two-year period.
And I have no indication or inclination to provide an extra pay for you between now and the time of your retirement. Okay, and I would not bring that up to this council. So that's where we are. I have said before, when we went through this early this year, it might have been late last year, I was a new mayor and I won't deny that maybe I kind of tripped over myself as I presented this to the council and presented this to the citizens. I'm learning. But I also said, when it comes time to hire our new manager, we'll have a new conversation, we'll sit around the table, we'll talk about the compensation, and if we want to change the procedures and the rules at that time, then we can do it and I'm very open to that. I restate that tonight, that we'll do that when that time comes, which will be sooner than later.
I'd like to point out that we're being asked to vote on this ordinance that is written right here, right now.
Right.
And that's why I'm just bringing it up. I think I've committed to the city council having a role in the contract with our city manager. It's that simple. If you want to sign this as it is today, then we abdicate that role.
No, you cannot.
And if that's what y'all want to do, you can vote that way.
That's, that's an incorrect position and statement of Alabama law. Alabama law is clear that we have the authority, that council has the authority over the city manager, and that we have the ability to amend by contract to what we've done. There's no, to imply that we're outside the bounds of law is irresponsible. We're within the bounds of law to what we're doing.
I didn't even mention law.
I am.
Well, good for you.
All right. This is law. Everything we're doing, we're passing ordinances, that's law.
Okay.
We're voting on law.
I just would like to point out that the previous, even though we were all, we all discussed this at some point, previous contract was signed prior to us bringing it to the city council. So, okay. I would like to, if, Mr. Mayor, make the, I, bring up-
Make your motion?
Yeah. I would like to make a motion that paragraph 16 of the proposed ordinance be modified to read that the city council confirms all previous changes and modifications to the original contract dated October 9th, 2017.
I would like to point of clarification for the motion. Are you stating that you would like to strike the words between the city council and city manager, James Carl Bustin III?
Yes, I would.
Okay. So who is the contract, original contract dated October 9th, 2017 with and who?
Good point. All right. The contract is between the city council and the city manager. All right. Can I restate my motion?
Sure, please.
That the city council confirms all previous changes and modifications to the contract between the city council and the city manager to the original contract dated October 9th, 2017.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. So all in favor of Mr. Griswold's amendment, please raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, the amendment's defeated. Okay, all right. So are there any other amendments? All right.
I don't have an amendment, but if you would indulge me, Jim, you spoke at the presentation about a commitment that you felt morally obliged to fulfill, which was to do with a sewer line in the preserve. I wondered if you could talk to us a little further about that. I still wasn't quite clear on what motivated you to make the decision that you did.
So it came to my attention that there was an obligation, at least as it came to me, that the city was obligated to pay for a sewer, a section of sewer that allowed the other section of sewer to be developed. And that there was a $250,000 commitment by the city to the Donahue Land organization. And that that obligation was never met. And this was about 12, maybe 12, 13 years ago. So I had staff look into that. What I found was that there was a contract between Donahue Land and the city of Auburn that obligated the city to pay $250,000. I then found that there was another contract that superseded that contract, that instead of the city paying Donahue Land $250,000, that another corporation that was starting development, which was the, corporation?
Preserve.
Preserve LLC.
Preserve LLC is the old-
Right, Preserve LLC, which was, is a corporation that originally started the Preserve Development. And that they were then going to be obligated to pay Donahue Land that $250,000. And there were some communication back and forth that presumably, and this is where it gets murky, Preserve LLC had already paid the city, that $250,000 was always going to come from the Preserve LLC, but it was the obligation of the city. So the Preserve LLC had already paid the city $180,000-some dollars at the time. That money was given back to the Preserve LLC with the understanding that then they, they, that corporation, would pay Donahue Land the $250,000. I think from conversations that we can find in old emails, that the idea was as that, as the Preserve developed and there were tap fees and everything collected, that's the money that would eventually be paid. Whether we, the city, had an obligation to make sure that that was paid or not, that is where I feel we have a moral obligation to do it, because I feel we should have had some obligation. We reaped the benefits of the money from the sewer fees. It allowed development to happen, which is property tax fees that the city received. It could be argued that we don't maybe legally have that obligation, and that's what I told the council. But from all the research I've done, there was a commitment by the city at one time to pay the $250,000. We can find no evidence that it was ever paid. All but one of the original Preserve LLC members have passed away. And the one that we talked to could never, could not remember ever paying the $250,000. So all the research we can find is that it was not paid. Donahue Land says they have never received it. And as I told the council, I believe we should pay it.
Thank you. Has the city received a benefit for that $250,000?
I believe, I mean, the city received the benefit of the sewer tap fees, of all the development, the fees that we'd get from taxes for the, for the land. I mean-
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the, for the, on this ordinance to amend the biannual, biannual budget, okay?
And let me just put one more thing. Any of these, as I've explained to the council, any of these things, you're accepting the budget, but you are not necessarily accepting these payments. All these payments have to come back to you individually. Anytime that there's a payment of over $15,000, it has to come back to you for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, second. Are there any other questions? Okay. Lindsey?
Griswold?
No.
Ovi?
Yes.
Barson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Those are all the items we have on the agenda this evening.
Any other, does anybody on the council have anything for other business? Did we confirm the committee of the whole for next week, next, for the- We did not confirm. We agreed to do it, but we did not confirm the time.
I think we should have a motion, a second and a vote, just to formalize it.
Okay. How much time do you think we need, Jim? 30 minutes?
I would probably put it at 30 minutes. And because I don't know, there may, I would have to go back, I don't know if there are any appointments, but I would probably say at 6:30.
I'd move to set the next committee of the whole at 6:30 so that we can discuss the requested information regarding the call or something.
Second.
All right, motion, second. All in favor of doing that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will meet at 6:30 on the 20th for the committee of the whole. Okay, at this point in time, it's time for the citizens' open forum. This is an opportunity for you to talk to the council about anything that is on your mind. We would ask you to please come forward and give your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes, okay? and you will have three minutes, okay?
My name's Tim Carlton, 613 Jennifer Drive. Your honor, council, my name is Tim Carlton, and as you can likely guess, I'm here to address the pipeline project at Chewahclaw State Park. I've lived in Auburn for seven years, longer than anywhere in the last 20 years of my life. I love this city, its people, and Chewahclaw State Park. I've spent hundreds of hours in Chewahclaw biking, hiking, swimming, picnicking, and volunteering with my family and friends. I started this petition because I was, for the first time, disappointed in my city and my state park service. It is first and foremost disappointing that we are having this discussion. The more I talk to folks about this issue, two recurring things emerge. First, the issue isn't about clearing widths or trail closures, or whether something is a permanent scar. It's about whether the project should be considered. Second, there's an overwhelming sense of surprise. Surprised from citizens and council members alike that this project involves placing a pipeline through the park, and very few people knew ahead of time. Surprised that the state park service would readily approve such a project, and surprised that nobody considered perhaps a different path was justified even at a higher cost. Chewahclaw is a place that means a lot to a lot of people. It is also a place that won't get any bigger, no matter how much bigger the city around it gets. Chewahclaw cost the city of Auburn next to nothing and provides so much. I believe that there are steps that can be taken to reduce impact. That said, I still believe there is another path. Yes, there are existing easements in Chewahclaw. These were built at a time when the park saw much less use and the community around it was much smaller. Times have changed, and using these prior projects as justification for this project is not a direct comparison. The petition is set out to engage people in an issue they feel deeply about. It is brought about community engagement, hopefully before it's too late. I'm proud of all my fellow citizens who have signed, written emails, held meetings, made calls, made videos, and engaged on social media. I'd like to think that the attention that this has raised gives folks in this room pause, time to think about what the park means to the community that surrounds it, what it means to the citizens of the state who own the park, as well as those that travel to Auburn and spend money with local businesses visiting Chewahclaw. I believe there is another option, and I'd like to believe that among all of the people in this room, there is the power to do the right thing before we regret it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Louis Adams, 2154 Jefferson Street. Not only does it not make sense to run a pipeline through the park, but this is critical habitat for endangered species, and all of y'all know that. It starts at Lake Ogle Tree and goes 17 miles downstream in the Chewahclaw. It started at Lake Ogle Tree, which is a tiny watershed, and we suck every gallon we can, 6 million gallons a day, out of that lake. Then we have the quarry. The combined effect over the last 15 years has been water table that has dropped. Homeowners getting sinkholes. The creek is getting sinkholes, fish kills. Creek is drying up. Then it goes down to the sewage trigma plant, which went from 5 million gallons of sewage to 12 million. Used to have a restriction. If the Chewahclaw flow was less than 2 million, they had to reduce the sewage flow. Now they can put 12 million gallons out a day, even if the Chewahclaw is only 1 million gallons of fresh water. All of this needs a new bioassessment that hasn't been done for 15 years in that area. It's not like you don't have another choice. You have right away that you can go along the roads and get this pipeline. Does not impact the Chewahclaw Creek, not impact the park, not impact disgruntled homeowners that have property through there. This should be an easy decision. In addition, the water board is planning on using the quarry in the future for water source and wants to run additional pipes at a minimum before any action's taken. In addition to a new bioassessment, we need to know the plans. What are the real plans for the water board going forward? I've asked that for three consecutive years. I have huge difficulty getting information out of them. I think it's now time to put the information on the table, let us know what's going on. Maybe you can convince everybody that that's the way to go. I don't believe, from what I know of the area, that it makes sense to run this through the park. Thank you.
Sir.
My name is Brian Prowl. I live at 266 Hedros Circle in Auburn. I wanted also to speak to you tonight regarding the pipeline through Chewahclaw. I want to thank Mr. Dawson, Mr. Parsons, and the mayor for their engagement to this to date. I understand others of you have also looked into this. As Mr. Carlton said, this really came as a surprise to many. There was not much information put out on this. I went back through the minutes of the council's meeting, of the water board's meeting, and it was first mentioned last September at one point that there would be a study done, but I've not seen anything on where this path would be or any discussion of this. I am also disturbed by how city management reacted to the citizens voicing our concerns about this project and minimizing our concerns. I provided Mr. Dawson with heat maps that show just how much Chewahclaw in general, and the impacted trails in particular, are used relative to running and cycling routes in the city. These same techniques are used by city engineers to assess cycling routes and within the city. In addition, the Auburn High School mountain bike team, as well as the Lee County team, use these trails extensively for training from mid-October through early May. These impacted trails were hand-built by volunteers. It's been stated that trails can be built for $3,000 a mile, and only 180 feet will be impacted. That's $102 if you do the math. I find that as a volunteer who's worked out there, and not as many hours as many of the people in this room, to be an insult. Looking at the city's map of the proposed routes, apparent that additional trail will be impacted by the width of the corridor where the trail runs parallel. Since the 25 miles of trail constructed have already damaged Chewahclaw, while others outside the city already laud this construction, is amazing feat for a volunteer organization, which has brought revenue to the city through visitors and through the races that are held there. My wish is this wouldn't happen, that you would find another way. If it does, we need the city's assurances that they will do everything possible to minimize the damage and restore the trails. Many of us are here tonight, volunteer our time, working at the park, building trails, working on Boy Scout Eagle projects, coaching youth, trying to make them healthier lifelong people, so health insurance rates maybe aren't so high in the future, even patching potholes in the park. We love Chewahclaw State Park. It's a great place, and we wish, I know some of you have walked the land, and I hope you have developed that same appreciation. Thank you.
Who'd be next?
Do we, can we, we come in now? We keep coming on the pipeline thing, or do we wait?
Anybody else?
Mayor, you don't get one. I gave you one last week.
That's fine.
Good evening. I'm going to give you guys just a minute to review just the first page.
Mr. Jackson, could we just get your name and address, please?
Yes. Mr. L.B. Jackson, 814 North College. I want to talk to you about something a little different than the pipeline. Talk about the pipeline of the monies, or the CDGB program. I've given you a copy of a narrative of what McChesney has given to the city concerning the way the monies has been handled in terms of the rehabbing of homes in Northwest Auburn primarily. I am very disappointed. There is a property that I'm pursuing, purchasing from a friend to help out, that has a brother that's terminally ill. Councilman Verlinda White was sitting in the seat where you guys sit, and during the time of an election, there were 15,000, as you know. Generally, if the council paid over 15,000, it has to be a vote. This is a little over $15,000 that was spent. I, for the last six months, have requested records and documentation so I could close this loan and bring some closure to this family's property. I have been repeatedly given the runaround, I feel, because if you notice, in this little package I've given you guys, somebody paid $15,000 and don't want their name to be shown. And it was during the time of an election, so the sitting councilwoman could not have owed the city any money. So I'm just trying to say that generally, most people in this room have bought property, and at every closing, there is a closing document that says who paid what? The buyer and the barrier. I, and McChesney says that the city of Auburn needs legal counsel from someone that has closing experience. It doesn't have to be an attorney. It can be a closing title company. And Mr. Smith, you being in the business, you know exactly what I'm talking about. But I'm, all I'm able to get, other than we've turned it over to the legal counsel of the city for the last five or six months, Mr. Williams was here last week, I'm at the last council meeting, I missed it. I'm just wondering, why is it taking so long? Just the name. I'm not asking for the number of the credit card that's blanked out here. I'm wanting to know who paid it. If the city used their credit card and paid it, they should say so. If someone in the city used their credit card and paid it, they should say so.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Well, I just, can I get an answer from somebody? Mr. Bustin? Why it's taking so long?
Okay. Don't address Mr. Bustin.
Well, or Mayor, can I, you promised us that you would, this thing, that when you ran, it would be clarity, and this is no clarity.
Transparency is the word we used.
Say that again, please?
Transparency.
Well, transparency, okay. What clarity in transparency?
Mr. Bustin, what's our current situation with this? And do we have, can we as a city provide that kind of information that Mr. Jackson is looking for?
We have directed both Mr. Jackson and Mr. Williams, I believe, to the city attorney, and the city attorney is handling that.
Mr. Jackson, it says clearly on that receipt who paid for it.
Well, it doesn't say that. It says, if you look there, there's a place for a signature, and that person would have to verify payment through a signature. Is that signed? And I'm looking for a timeline. I'm trying to close. I have a person that's terminally ill, so I'm looking for.
So you can't pay an attorney to get a clear title?
No, no, no one will ensure the title with it hanging out there, and she's demanding $10,000, since she's the third party.
So who, whose signature?
No signature.
I'm confused, because it says paid by Verlinda White, and so who, is Verlinda's signature supposed to be here, or who's?
Whoever paid it should be there on the bottom of the receipt. Whoever swiped that card should have put their signature.
So is that, I mean?
It's a title issue.
What role does the city council have in this?
None. I mean, this is, this is something that came through, that has been dealt with. If Mr. Jackson has any issues, we have directed him to the city attorney's office.
Have you called the city attorney's office yet, Mr. Jackson?
We requested the files, and we have requested a pay receipt documentation, and we have, as of last week, a week before last, we asked to see the files, and we haven't received anything, and it said that we should receive that within seven days, or some kind of explanation. Day before yesterday, Caitlin called Mr. Williams, Reverend Williams, and told him that it had just been referred to the city attorney. So that's been, like, if you notice the dates of the request, I added those to the rear. If you look at it, this thing has been going on, and it McChesney plainly says to you guys that this thing, this needs to be handled different.
Yes.
We have given Mr. Jackson everything that we have. Mr. Jackson believes there's additional information. Mr. Jackson has been asked to meet with the city attorney if he has any other questions. We have supplied, on two occasions, I believe, the same information. That's all we have. If he wants more information, he needs to go and talk to the city attorney, and we don't have anything.
Mayor, would you ask the city manager when that request was made, before, day before yesterday? Caitlin called Mr. Williams day before yesterday and informed him that it was turned over to the city attorney, only day before yesterday. So, I mean, Jim, you're giving me the runaround, and I'm not stupid in them. I've been into enough real estate closings to know how it goes.
Go ahead, Brett.
Jim? Does the city have, did the city have a lien on the property, or some sort of?
No, we have nothing else to do. This was a CDBG loan.
Before, was, when the CD, was there a note, was there a lien, or some sort of cloud on the title?
So what happened, this was a loan, the person who had the loan passed away.
Okay.
There was some time that, a little bit of time that went by, but then the daughter, I believe, of the person who passed away, Ms. White, satisfied the loan, which closed it, and now we're done. Now.
Who was the loan holder? The CBG, the, what organization held the loan?
It would, well, we, the CDBG funds, would have, would have provided the first loan, and I don't know what the mother's name was.
Jesse Merrell Williams.
But, so about a year ago, we had an open records request that we provided the information. This was, I believe, just about a year ago. And then I believe we got another one, which we provided the same information several months ago, and now.
Do you know when this was paid off? So your opinion, understanding that this was paid off in full?
Whatever that credit card date is, was the date it was paid off in full.
City then record a satisfaction of lien?
It was recorded.
Okay. So right now, at Lee County Probate Office, there's a satisfaction of lien that would clear the title to this claim, or city.
Correct. Hang on one second.
Yeah. So that could be pulled over?
Yes.
From the city's perspective, I mean, we don't know what the family did after, afterwards.
We do not.
And that's not our purview or our responsibility.
That is correct.
But the potential cloud on title from the 15,000 was satisfied, and we've recorded a satisfaction?
Correct.
Okay.
And it states in there, in this recommendation, in the narrative, that other family members, that's where the conflict comes in. There are two other parties there that is being asked to pay back money that they don't know that she paid.
This is a corrective action plan for the audit period of October 16 through September of 17. This has, and this is a, this doesn't list any individual or any person as an overall action plan for the auditor.
But it also, it also stated that the city's records were being kept somewhat improperly and recommended that you seek legal counseling in the real estate and the mortgage on the last paragraph on the next page over, and that hadn't been done, so that's why I'm back here, back and forth with you guys, because you, someone didn't do their job, their due diligence to clear the records up.
It states that we have the action taken. It states that clearly.
Well, I think that, just from me looking at it now, I'm just trying to figure out, even if it was paid to whoever, shouldn't someone have signed the receipt? There's a signature line here. So I think the question is, is this signature?
Exactly.
Well, no, because this is a duplicate receipt, which does not show a signature.
Okay, so where's the original?
Well, I mean, I believe, I mean, I don't know that we need to be in the business of passing out receipts with signatures on it.
Well, if you're closing, and the city held a note, then the city should be responsible for releasing it and saying who released it. When somebody's asking me for $10,000, I'm going to want to know who that person is that paid that money.
Mr. Jackson, I believe Mr. Bustin just said there was a satisfaction recorded at Lee County Probate regarding, you can reference the, if you look up the lot parcel note.
You can reference the, if you look up the lot parcel number, you can reference the chain of title and pull, there should be a satisfaction, and that should take, alleviate any obligation the city has. That should clear title.
Right.
That'd be $100.
Okay. Send me a bill. It doesn't appear that I'm gonna get very much farther. And Jim did say that he recommended me to the city attorney. If I don't have any satisfaction from the city attorney, I'll see you guys in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Sorry. Great job. Is there anyone else?
Good afternoon. Oh, sorry. Ben Prowl from 266 Hedger Circle. We all have to say our names or?
You'll be fine.
All right, cool.
You're doing great.
We would just like to voice our concerns about the water line going through Chihuahua State Park. All of us have, are, have very much, have spent tons of time at Chihuahua and just love the park, and would like to see this not happen, as there are multiple routes that could be taken around it. Combined, we've spent thousands of hours at Chihuahua, mountain biking, we're all on the mountain biking team, which has gone second, second three times and first twice in the state, and as well as all the revenue that has come through these races to the city. So we just see that it kind of, like, just to see our park get, have trees taken out, and then, which is also one of the most beautiful parts of the park, just kind of like. You have two minutes.
My name is Trey Michelle, and I live at 1750 Raymer Place. And I just think that the water line through Chihuahua cuts through a big part of our practicing area. We have a specific area of the park where we practice, and that's where we get all our training in. And I think a water line through Chihuahua would just be a big waste of recreational and also educational space. I know that my fourth grade class took a field trip there. And if we have more and more water lines and sewage lines running through there, then that's gonna be a big loss on educational opportunities, it's gonna impact the environment and a big loss on recreational opportunities, as we won't be able to practice there.
Hi, I'm Joshua Ingram. I live on 614 Green Street, and I'm not speaking to you as a mountain biker right now. I'm speaking to you as a scout. The same place that he was talking about, where people go to practice, is also a major site for scouting events, such as the campery, the freezery, the, and then several campouts. And I think that cutting through that field just takes away much of the camping area, and you can't have those events anymore at that location. And, yeah.
Y'all have got 20 seconds. Anyone else?
That's awesome. I loved y'all's video, by the way. It was really great.
Good evening, Todd Deary, 1277 Sweetwood Circle. It's hard to follow Boy Scouts, that's for sure, but I will attempt to. Again, I want to address the water line through Chihuahua from a little bit of a different perspective. I'm 51 years old. I'm a mountain biker and cyclist. I moved to Auburn about four months ago. I did go to school here, so my first time I stepped foot in this town was 1985.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. One of the things that I looked at when I was making a decision to come back was recreational opportunities, specifically opportunities to hike and bike. And I did not utilize Chihuahua nearly as much as I should have as a student, but certainly that was a large part of my decision-making when I came back and look now. Having this amazing park in basically my backyard is a real, real benefit. And I'm sure probably all of you know that sort of intellectually, but unless you're out there and using it a lot, maybe some of you are, I hope all of you are, to hike and to mountain bike. I'm out there at least twice a week now, bought an annual pass the second day I was here. And so I would really encourage you to find some other way to put this pipeline. I'm sure you could argue that it'll be covered up, and the trees won't be bad, but unless you mountain bike and use them on a consistent basis, you would understand the interruption. And frankly, we tend to view progress, both in this town and certainly in the state that I came from, which is Florida, as building things, knocking things down, building bigger things, getting more sales tax and all of that. And while that may be important in some areas, and of course, we're struggling with it with downtown and elsewhere, for recreational and for parks, what we want is to be left alone. Don't build on them, don't dig through them, leave them as they are. Chihuahua's a beautiful, beautiful place. The groups that have built out those trails, as somebody else mentioned, are almost all volunteers. And it's a really, I can tell you from, coming from another state, I've traveled all over the southeast and mountain biked, and that Chihuahua is a really, really beautiful place. And it's a, and it was one of the reasons why I came here. So I would encourage you to find another way to put that pipeline. It's sad enough for me that the second to last time I was out there, I'm mountain biking up on, for Pete's sake, and I look over and I see this huge area that's been cleared that is going in for development off of Shell Tumor, one of two, I think, that are on that parkway. That's bad enough to be able to see that, but now we're seeing, you know, water lines being proposed and going through. So please, please, take the citizens' input, and if all possible, reroute that. And in the future, let's just leave Chihuahua alone and keep it as natural as possible so we can use it for all the things that we love. Thank you for your consideration.
My name's Kevin Horchel. I live at 1023 Sanders Street. So I want to jump on the bandwagon here, talking about the park. All right. So the history of that park goes back to the '30s, Civilian Conservation Corps. If you go online right now, go on YouTube, you'll see from 1937, video footage of people riding bicycles in that park. I think it's important to keep it that way.
Okay. Okay, we'll close this part of our meeting. Does anyone on the council have a comment or a question for staff?
I do.
Yep.
I was just wondering, just listening at everybody talking about the pipeline, and I'm not familiar with pipelines, and, because I'm not an engineer or anything, but just listening at, I have a sort of a twofold question here. They was talking about other routes that's available, and I was just wondering what other routes are available and why? And the second part of that question is, is why haven't those routes been considered or have they been considered?
Alternate routes were considered. I can, if you'd like, Mayor, I can have the engineer, the consulting engineer here, and our Water Resource Management Director address that.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matthew McDougald. I am the consulting engineer for the Water Works Board of the City of Auburn through my company, which is Jacobs Engineering. I'm also a resident at 2021 Preserve Drive. To answer, directly answer your question, yes, ma'am, there were other routes considered. There were basically two principal routes that took very many variations, but the general route that was opposite of this one would have been to go up Mill Creek Road and then go down Shell Tumor Parkway to the entrance of the park. That particular route was approximately one mile longer. It actually had several other issues to deal with that were very similar to what we're dealing with at the park. Many trees would likely be cut down through that route. The current route actually is much shorter, and the, excuse me, the route that we considered for the alternate, which was all right-of-way, that's what I was trying to say, would have led to issues that are very similar. However, it would have been much more expensive, and as part of what we do to evaluate the cost for the water board, is to determine which route will be the least impactful to the least amount of people. And all of those things were considered in. And unfortunately, one issue we're always looking at is cost. And if we were to spend more money and go the alternate route, that impacts the water payers directly. So every citizen of Auburn and beyond that pays a water bill would have an increase in their costs associated with that, and that is a direct cost. So we're always evaluating everything from a big-picture standpoint. And in this particular case, evaluating both routes, there were people that would be affected, there will be people that are unhappy. And unfortunately, this particular source of water is desperately needed for the city. This is an increase of approximately 35% of what the city can produce right now. And so this particular source is incredibly important for being able to have multiple sources in addition to what we already have, will be able to encounter issues with some of the sources that are there now. So there's, there are many, many factors, is really what I'm trying to say here. I apologize for going around the rail to do that. But to directly answer your question, other routes were considered, other routes were considered outside the park, other routes were considered inside the park. Inside the park, we met directly with park representatives, we met with the state park director on two occasions. And the state park director, very from the beginning, when we met with him, said, "The biking organizations and the biking people are incredibly important to this park. They're incredibly, incredibly important to him." And he wanted to be sure that he sought their input and that the impact, if he were to approve it going through the state park, that the impact that was made was as minimal as possible. And that is what, together, the water board, my company, and the state park director sought. And that is how we got to where we are. Now, once we received approval from the state park director, we began finalizing the route through the park to a level that it could be built. We're still not there yet, because we just received that approval maybe a couple of months ago, not exactly sure when that was. But, so my point is, we started these conversations in May of 2018. We looked at all the available routes, we talked to all the people that were going to be able to permit the routing. And we ended up, at this point, with all of the people that were able to permit and allow the work to be done, to be involved. At this point, everything is not finalized, because we have just received approval to go through the state park. So that's why flags went up in the state park and stakes went up, because we're, we're trying to get the surveyors and everyone to get out there and determine that we are meeting our goal of the minimal impact inside the park. And that is still a moving target for us to achieve that.
I want to walk through some facts that we discussed this morning when we met with you, and thank you for your time. Not everybody was there, but I think we've had independent meetings to gain information. And one, before we get into those facts, I think it's very important to recognize that we acknowledge, or I acknowledge, the investment in the trails that have been constructed and, and the time, sweat, and talent and treasures that the mountain bikers and the runners and so forth have invested in our state park, and for that, I'm grateful and thankful. And that doesn't go without notice. However, there's several things that we have to understand in this situation is, one, this is under the purview of the Water Works Board, and they are autonomous from the city council. That being said, we do want to let our constituents, or I want to let the constituents know that we are hearing you and listening. And so that is one of the reasons why I felt it important to get what I consider the facts. And that is that this is an independent water source that you just stated we need as a city, because we are reliant upon neighboring municipalities for water, which we have recently experienced some not-so-pleasant activities with one of our neighboring municipalities and their water source. Nothing harmful, just taste is not the best. So an independent water source and an improved water quality, is that correct?
That is correct, but I do want to reiterate that it is an independent source. It does allow for more sources, but we will still be depending upon neighboring communities to partner with us.
But it reduces our reliance upon neighboring?
Correct.
Okay. And then it was stated in the citizens' communications that studies should be done, and it's my understanding from this morning's meeting that the following reports were, and research was done. A cultural and historical survey.
That's correct.
A protective species evaluation.
That is correct.
And a wetland and stream evaluation.
That is correct.
And did any of those reports find anything that would give pause or concern for the protection of the parks?
They did not. I would like to point out that our plan from the beginning has been to bore under Chihuahua Creek and not disturb it in any way because of the known species that were there.
And it still has to go through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so through this whole process, which I think began back in May of 18?
That is correct.
We've had the Water Works Board, the Water Resource Management, your engineering group, the state parks system, the bike associations.
And I will say, their participation has been mainly through the state park, yes.
Okay. So we've been trying to work towards a best-case scenario for the good of the whole community.
That is correct.
And so we are also, we're disturbing some trails, and that's, that's a fact, we're disturbing some trails, but it's our intent to replace those trails and make them whole again.
Absolutely.
What is the timeframe that you anticipate the disturbance of those trails?
We would expect to be working within the area of the trails with approximately three to four months, depending on weather and things, but that's, that's a conservative approach, that we would be in that area no more than three or four months.
And after the construction and the work is done, and nature comes back into play, you'll have a 20-foot greenway that will exist along the route of the water pipe?
There will be a 20-foot width that will be maintained where no large trees or vegetation can grow, so that the water pipeline can be maintained if there ever were to be a break in the pipeline.
And I know that the bike groups have a very large event in March.
That's correct.
And it's our intent not to prohibit that from taking place, correct?
Absolutely.
And we are also following some old roadbeds within the park?
There are a few, yes, with, to address some of the concerns that I heard in previous. So the Civilian Conservation Corps campground, which we are adjacent to with our route, there are roadbeds there that are, once again, adjacent to that campground, not within that campground, that we will be using because there is already cuts in the tree canopy there.
And then the, the trails that will, or the pipeline line would be of use to anyone who wanted to, like, use it as a trail, a bike path, to, I mean, to potentially be an additional?
Sure, yes. It would be, it would be, just like we stated previously, 20 feet of area that is cleared of large vegetation and trees, that if you were to want to walk down, you certainly could. could.
And we have a sewer easement that currently exists through the park?
Yes.
And is it noticeable? Are you, can you tell where that is?
Well, for sewer easement, there's manholes, and, but, but in this case, there would be no manholes like that. But there is a bike trail on the sewer easement now.
And are there any homes that were impacting directly, homes? I know properties, but any homes with this proposed pipeline route that we were shown this morning? Are there any homes that would be impacted?
The current, the route that we're discussing here?
Right.
No, no homes.
And if we were to take an alternate route, do we anticipate, do we have an estimate of how many homes and?
Well, I guess to better address your question, when we're going, so outside of the park area, we will be going along Wright's Mill Road for certain areas. So there are some driveways and homes there that, the homes will not be impacted, but the driveways, as we go through on the right-of-way, will be impacted. And so if we were to go along Shell Tumor Parkway, we would have more of those, those issues.
And there's a current existing canopy through that, that route, if that were to be the case, that we would have to go that route?
The existing canopy is not, not accept, will not work, simply because there are already utilities within the existing cut corridor. So there are, with, in certain areas, there are three water mains along Shell Tumor Parkway that are already there, and this would be adding another.
The existing line, what kind of line, is that another water line, or what kind of line did you say that was?
The one's along Shell Tumor Parkway.
It's already existing in the park.
There is a sewer line that runs through the park now.
Do you know how old that line is?
I believe we said earlier today that it was in the '80s when that was?
Correct. Mid-'80s.
There was another thing we discussed today at our, or you'd mentioned, is there's some, a particular benefit, a safety benefit. Could you tell me again about that?
Well, sure. Anytime we can reduce construction along public right-of-ways, where there's busy streets and traffic, and in the case of Shell Tumor, where there's hills and drives where people are turning out, anytime we can reduce the area, the work that's going on in those places is better for public safety. Not only public safety, but the contractor's safety and those workers that are working in the area, just because it limits the likelihood of some unfortunate event happening.
How about specifically in the park, though? I think you had mentioned that there's a way now for emergency paramedics or potential?
Sure. One added benefit would be that currently there is no way for vehicle access to the west side of Town Creek, where the bike trails are located. And so this would be an added benefit from the perspective of, if there were to be some unfortunate event, someone get hurt or something like that, they could actually utilize the easement that is on the adjacent property to get to the route and then maybe access those people a little easier.
What do you do now, if that were, someone were to be injured in the?
I think we'd have to ask the organization. I'm not exactly sure, but I know you can't really get a vehicle back there.
The gentleman earlier spoke about his fears of the water table diminishing and the possibility of other infrastructure going through. He wasn't clear about the intentions of future work of the water board. Is there any, can anybody speak to us about what other possible work in the future would we be anticipating?
Beyond well number four, I think we've talked about it in budget meetings before, that we would like to renegotiate a contract with Opa-licka at some point for more water there.
I'm sorry. I was speaking more directly in terms of what other future effects might we anticipate specifically in Chihuahua?
From well number?
From any kind of other pipelines or any other activity?
We're not anticipating any future impacts on it. However, when we do start well number four, we will plan on slowly ramping that well up in production over time, over a long period. For instance, run it for a year, a million or two million gallons a day, and then maybe go three or four or five years, ramp it up to three million gallons a day, observe, and so forth, until we're comfortable that everything's fine. The geology in this area is very unusual, and nobody's been able to figure it out. We are very cautious about that, but we have been permitted by A.D.M. for four million gallons a day.
The reports that we received in email today, have they been shared with people who requested them? Is that, are those reports available to the public to view?
Those are publicly available. I mean, anybody who wants them can get them. They have not been, I don't think they're on a website anywhere, but anyone who wants them can get them.
That's correct. Just to be clear, exactly as, as Councilman Witten said, the, the reports were done as part of the permitting process, which is not complete yet, because those are directly associated with the U.S. Corps of Engineers nationwide permit and notification. And so those were all done so that that permit could be submitted. And so, once that permit is submitted, you could even get it from the U.S. Corps of Engineers, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, but it has not been submitted yet. So, yes, it would have to be specifically requested for that reason, just because it hasn't been finalized from a standpoint of the entire document.
Can we get copies of the reports tomorrow that you mentioned? Oh, I'm sorry. We're in the middle of a meeting here. Anybody else from the council have anything?
So this, this is nothing that we, we are voting on. We're just discussion.
It's not enough for you.
Okay. So it's a done deal? Because I heard you say somebody had been approved.
That's, that's correct. It's been approved by the state park to go through the state park. From a done deal, I don't suppose it's a done deal perspective until the contract is signed and the, and the pipeline is built. However, we have worked for a year now to try and find the, the best route for all of those concerned, and this, by everyone that was part of those conversations, has agreed is the case. And by getting the state park's approval was really the step that allowed us to go into the next phase of design, which will eventually lead to bid and construction.
And I may have missed, tell me again, the line goes down, it's going to cross point, certain points on the established bike trails. What is the, what's the, what does it look like afterwards? What are, what kind of remedial actions are going to be taken, or anticipated to be taken, to put those bike trails back the way they were? What's that look like?
Sure. So the, the plan would be, and we do this for, anytime we're, we're building, so I am an engineer that designs water treatment plants, water pipelines. I am not a bike trail guy. I readily acknowledge that, and no one on the Water Works Board or that works for the Water Works Board are bike trail designers. So we would go and find, just like is the case for anything that, that public money is spent on, we go and find the people that are qualified to do the work. So the plan would be for us to bring in someone that is certainly knowledgeable in rebuilding bike mountain trails, or mountain bike trails, where we would be disturbing them. We would then take proposals from those people, and we would include the restoration of those trails as part of the work that would be done as the installation of the pipeline. So it would be done by someone that, that knows what they're doing, that can certainly build the trails back in a way that will be appropriate and useful, and maybe potentially even better if, if there's a way to do so. And that would be part of the contract that would go in as the construction of the pipeline's done.
And part of that process, are you going to be looking to our, our local folks, our local guys riding bikes, to get their input on how they'd like to see? I mean, are we going to get some feedback from them and input?
Yes. We would, we would love to have that.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else from the council have a question for Matt? Thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Buston, you've got Eric there with you. Is there anything, is there anything that y'all feel like needs to be said at this point in time that we haven't talked about it yet?
Yes, I'd like to say a few things about the alternate routes we looked at. Going down Mill Creek Road and Shell Tumor Parkway, I think would be very, very destructive, not only to people's front yards, but to the overall look to the community and people driving that parkway. We would have to...
Please, please, let him finish, okay? Let him finish. Thank you.
Regardless of which route we take, we will have to cross Chihuahua Creek and Town Creek. I think that was, someone may have mentioned, they thought going the alternate route, we would not have to cross Chihuahua Creek. Bio-assessments were mentioned. The water board has been conducting bio-assessments and muscle surveys in Chihuahua Creek for the last 15 years.
Annually? Hmm? Annually? Every year?
Annually, as part of the safe harbor agreement. We completed our obligation in December of 2018. Lake Ogle Tree does release two million gallons a day from the dam site daily as part of the safe harbor agreement. And I think we made it clear in multiple meetings with bike club members that we would work around their bike racing schedules, especially the big race in March, and we encouraged their input on repairing the trails, and we, the water board would definitely make them whole in that issue. We don't want to leave a bike trail unrepaired. We want it repaired properly into their satisfaction, so.
Does anybody on the council have any questions for Eric?
Do you have one more comment?
Sure.
I think there's a perception out there that this is going to be a 50-foot-wide right-of-way cleared, like you might envision on a gas main or a power main. That's not what this is going to look like. I have plenty of pictures of water line easements, sewer line easements. You can see they're very passive in nature and, and very conducive to hiking or biking, for that matter, so.
Okay.
Lots of canopy over the trails.
Okay. All right. So does anybody in the council have any follow-up for what, any of the comments that Eric just made? Sure. Anyone in the council have any other comments at all?
Mayor, could I just add one thing?
Absolutely.
Those reports can be available, and anybody who wants to get Eric's contact information after the meeting, he can give it to them, and he can send them those reports. He can email them to them.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. The same ones we received, the council received this afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Anyone else from the council?
Yeah, I, I didn't get to go out with the engineer today, but I did get to walk, walk the affected area with Tim on the weekend. And I shared with him at the time that I also ride mountain bikes, and I get out to Chihuahua, not as often as I'd like, having the type of work and the family that I have. It keeps me busy, but it's, I'd really like to echo my pro tem's feelings about the incredible work you've done, the investment of time, where you could have been anywhere else, but you were out there. Just, just walking with Tim the other day, we walked across a limb across a path, and he just kind of made a mental note to bring his chainsaw out with him the next time he was out. And, you know, that, that's a lot of work. That's schlepping, schlepping some heavy equipment out into the middle of nowhere to make a trail for us to enjoy. And, and I do enjoy them. They're, they're awesome. And I just, just want to let you know that that work is not, doesn't go unnoticed. And thank you so much.
Brett, I believe you...
I just want to echo the same thing. I'm very appreciative of the passion of everybody, that, all the emails, had opportunity to walk today with, with, as I mentioned earlier. I thank you for the economic driver. I appreciate you creating a tourism spot, folks that come, they share in the passion of mountain biking and cycling. I appreciate, as a parent, you guys creating an opportunity for, for energy, to get out in front of the television and do, and go and do and be out. And so I'm, I'm very, very appreciative of the, the passion, the commitment the parents, you parents have made to your kids, to get them out and riding, and that, it's just awesome. Speaks a lot, and it, it's definitely, from what I understand, it's been an economic driver at the park itself. The trails, the time and trails that you've put in, it's, it's created a love to go to a state park, and, and also it's, it's competitions here, and, and people spending money in our downtown, in our restaurants, and staying in our hotels. And I am, as been on council, very, very appreciative of that commitment to our state park and to our city for all of you gentlemen and ladies. So, thank you.
Anyone else? You know, Auburn's a great place, because we got fantastic people, and y'all are a great example of that. And your passion and concern and desires to make Auburn different has made Auburn different. We all thank you for what you've done out there. I've lived in this town all my life, and you have breathed a tremendous wind of new life into Chihuahua State Park, and we all benefit, the entire community benefits, by your efforts and your endeavors and your enthusiasm. Frankly, I think you are civic heroes for how you have gone about doing this. You've asked for permission, and then we've gotten out of the way, and you've gone and made it happen. And from that, you've given children an opportunity to participate in something that they feel, that they're excited about, and it's a niche for them. And they love being out there, and it gives them purpose and competition, and they learn great life lessons through all that out there. And for that, that is a tremendous benefit. We have had those young people, as they have won state championships, we have brought them into this, this room and cheered them on, on those evenings, and we will continue to do that, and thank you for doing that. This is a very difficult decision. Obviously, it's not a decision that we have the purview over, but it's a decision that has been worked on for a while and that the water board is, is, I believe, will be seeking to move forward with. I'd be very disappointed, once this is all said and done, that your track is not put back as you have built it. And certainly, we will do all that we can to make sure that that occurs. But your efforts are to be applauded. They're not to be thanked, they're to be applauded, because you have made a huge difference in this community that we could really never say thank you to. Okay? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
We adjourn.